Good evening, everyone. It's 7:33 PM. And we will reconvene on Montgomery Township School District Board of Education meeting here on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. Roll call, please. Board Secretary Trent.
Yes, Mr. Carlson. Ms. Dowling. Ms. Fiegler.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Spina.
Hello.
Ms. Willock Ajernigan.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Todd.
Here.
Ms. Frankel Herman.
Present.
Dr. Spence Wallace.
Present. Would everyone please rise for the process?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Father, the Lord, your saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone please be seated and thank you. So at this time, it is a delight for the Board of Education to introduce to you Ms. Sophia Robb. She's our Montgomery High School Student Representative for member. And that's our first item on the agenda is to hear our student report.
Good evening and thank you so much for the warm welcomes. Um, as we're present, um, Spence Wallace echoed, my name is Sophia Robb and I'm the student representative for this upcoming academic year. A little bit about myself is that although this is only my second year at MHS, I've had the privilege of attending OEGS, VES, and the year at LMS. We've started this year off great at MHS with our football team starting the season off well and 3-0. Our boys and girls soccer teams have also been at hard work with conditioning and starting the season. And we look forward to seeing how all of our student athletes succeed this fall's fourth season. Students are getting involved in countless clubs and extracurricular activities at MHS. Clubs like Red Cross Club, crochet, mock trial, environmental, aerospace, international, computer science, and many, many more. Students are getting involved not just as members, but also as leaders, giving a chance for our students' leaderships to grow and thrive. Earlier this week, students remembered staff member Mrs. Chris Rizda, known by many as Mrs. R., with a building-wide moment of silence due to her passing. Counseling is available to all students during this time. This Monday, the building also observed another moment of silence to reflect on the events of September 11th, 2023. Overall, students at Montgomery are hopeful for another great year filled with quality education and meaningful praise.
So next, our superintendent, Mary McLaughlin, is reporting her presentation.
Good evening. The school year is off to a great start. Back-to-school night is just around the corner. We invite all parents to join us at their children's respective schools to meet the teachers and hear more about their classroom activities. Further information will be provided by the individual schools. Friday night lights are back and our stands are packed. We were able to support Wade's Army in a community-wide fundraising event on September 1st with our MHS students taking the lead in creating an evening that aims to make a difference in the lives of many children who need it most. Wade's Army is a local nonprofit organization dedicated to raising awareness and funding for neuroblastoma, a rare and aggressive form of childhood cancer. Wade's Army has started, was started to continue the fight of Wade DeBrueut, the youngest brother of MHS student, Wade DeBrueut. At UMS, the staff started the year with community-building activities during team time. They helped team assemblies with seventh and eighth graders to share the champs we care at, uh, uh, sorry, we care at UMS and our core values: community, acceptance, resilience, and empathy. The topic shared was safety and security procedures and protocols, self-care, mutual respect, and accountability with code of conduct and restorative interventions, intent versus impact, and as it pertains to the power of words and actions concerning HIV. Sporting events began at UMS. Late classes begin next week, as well as extracurricular activities. Yesterday at LMS, in honor of September 11th, communities' higher school met at the Flagpole to honor the lives of those lost in time of war. We celebrate the courage and the commitment of Americans who came together on that day to help one another. We offered a moment of silence in honor of those who lost, those lost and together. We offer our respect to our country as we unify this school, the state of athletic leagues. LMS and UMS are working together with the middle school PTO to find a time in October to host a community afternoon, family events, and support the schools working together and support getting to know the new administrators. At Philic, the administration hosted four welcome assemblies with all, with all classes during the students, which, in which the students reviewed expectations and ways to make Village an awesome place to be. They live by these rules: be safe, take care of school property, be respectful, take responsibility for your actions, be in control of your body and of your works. During the welcome assemblies, the students engaged in discussions about how they can demonstrate these in all the areas of Village Elementary School in their everyday lives. Students in all grades at Orchard Hill are adjusting well beginning of the school year. We deserve full attention from them. Teachers spend time the first few days building classroom community and reinforcing our club core values: safe spaces, kind words, and friendly faces. One early academic routine that is already underway is our Bridges Number Cap Corner, which reinforces number concepts, pattern identification, and problem solving in all grades. Thank you to all families for their support and the kids of the school year. We look forward to seeing you all at our back-to-school days.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaughlin. So we reached a part of our agenda for our first public comment specific to action agenda items only. And the instructions are: The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are invited one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda items only for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, however, please state your name and address and write both in the notebook provided on the podium. Being mindful of privacy rights providing students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured, excuse me, as Q and A sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, typically starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. Was I misreading Trent? Did you come in for that first public comment specific to action agenda items?
Good evening. My name is Tatiana Reyes. I'm with the 85th and 25th Drive, for the meeting.
Yes.
Alright. So I have a question regarding item number 2.3, United in a Gender Resolution. In particular, I want to know what, you know, psychology evaluation and social work you require for this school. Just appreciate your explanation about that. I, thank you.
Thank you. Will there be any other public comments specific to action agenda items? Thank you, everyone. Our action agenda item public comment is now closed. Superintendent McLaughlin, would you please respond to that question? It's very ritual this time.
So we hire consultants and companies to help us if we have additional needs for, let's say, independent evaluation or if needing a timeline, the case manager is absent. And then, these are the great necessities when we use them, because we said they're there for us to use and have them to mass, those are the calls.
Could you be specialized?
Only, only for special.
Can I ask a follow-up? Um, yeah. So would you, typically, are they being used for consultative services for students? Or is it more done in testing and evaluation?
Testing and evaluation? Are we in the criteria for class application?
These are child study and evaluations that would typically be done by our own professionals. So these, these services supplement those services when we, when we need to do that in order to pick timelines to evaluate the students.
Would that include anything with that transgender policy when a student has an issue with that?
This is, this is specifically with regard to the evaluation and determination of eligibility of students for special education.
Thank you. Superintendent McLaughlin. Board Attorney Fogarty. Alright. Community representative reports are next. And we'll start with our NCEA report, delivered by the president, Mr. Jim Dolan.
Good evening, board members, community members, colleagues, administrators. This is a whole record, I think, that I made up here. So we're zipping through the agenda. I probably just chased it. It's sufficient. Great start to our school year. We started with September 1st, which is our annual convocation. This is the one unique time of the year where we have all staff together in one place at the high school. And we're able to start with a wonderful breakfast. Uh, we have our board members, many of our board members attending, uh, which is nice to always have that support as well. Um, we kicked off with a nice beginning from Superintendent McLaughlin, followed by another always inspirational speech from Dr. Spence Wallace, our board president. And then, I did my best to follow after that. She always sets me up for success. Then, we acknowledged our staff members. We acknowledged 55 staff members who had years of experience ranging from 15 in Montgomery all the way up to 30. We had two staff members with 30 years of experience. So, quite amazing. And you have to keep in mind, just because we acknowledged 55, we had people all in between years: 16 years, 26 years, and so on, that we didn't acknowledge. So we have quite an experienced staff here in Montgomery. And then we close it out with one of our UMS teachers, Wendy Montell, who does our annual convocation speech to really, she did an amazing job, inspired us all, and got us ready for the school year. So she really knocked it out of the park just like every convocation speaker does every year. So we always pick the best and it's very inspirational, a wonderful way, like I said, to kick off the school year. I think everyone who was there, board members and members and certainly administrators, the energy that was in the room. It started with the buzz. Maybe we just gave too much sugar for breakfast. I don't know. But it started with that buzz and certainly extended into it as well. Uh, school's open, as we all know. I was around to many of the building, just like many of our administrators, saying hello and seeing all of our learners, especially our youngest learners for full-day kindergarten. They always amazed me. They're so cute when they get off the bus and also the size of their backpacks. So if I were to do something, I might want to invent a backpack that's a little bit smaller for kindergartners because they are quite large. But it was nice to see that, to see all the smiling faces, to see the energy, to see the welcomes. And, you know, kindergarten, one or two tears along the way. But after those passed, it was just a wonderful day. So now we're just looking to really get into the routine of the school year to experience all the fun things. Like we talked, started talking about clubs and athletics and events that each of the buildings have. And then just get into that, continue that routine, obviously to support all the fun stuff, but also the learning that takes place too. So we're set up for another great year of success. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. So now our board member, the representative reports, starting with board member Stina, our NCPACK advisory report.
So the NCPACK, which is the Montgomery Special Education Parent Advisory Group, which is a state-mandated group, met yesterday on September 11th. The, uh, with board members Harris, myself, second VP Todd, and board president Spence Wallace, as well as Superintendent McLaughlin and the interim director of special services, Mary Pat. The items that we had on the agenda were some questions and clarifications around Lex PD and what that means for professional development for staff. And Mary Pat did a fabulous job explaining how our, uh, staff offerings, um, meet the, and exceed the mandatory PD by giving over and above. We also talked about the special education audit. We had some conversation with the parent group about the timeline of the events that had happened with the RFPs. This is going back a couple of years now. And what has been done so far. So like, where we started the process and up until now. And so at this point, the auditing agency has already sent out surveys to staff, to parents. That was all done in the spring. They'll be analyzing that data. They also analyze assessment scores. In the fall now, they'll be doing interviews with staff and, or they're ready to be interviewed with staff. They'll be doing interviews with parents. We, they would be going in and observing classes for about two and a half days in the spring. Technically, they've already completed that. And so this is all ongoing work. During the October meeting, we'd like to, we requested that a representative from the agency providing the audit come to our meeting and have a conversation with the board members and the parent group and the administration. We also discussed bus routes and how scheduling happens via a specific platform and how the data is looked at and how follow-up is regularly occurring between Mr. Washington, our transportation supervisor, and Mary Pat Publicover, the student's special services director, making sure that all of the drivers and aides have all of the correct training and are up to speed on, um, the needs of all students, not just our special education students. We also talked a bit about our Gifted and Talented Program. And we will be reaching out to Ms. Borland, our Director of Parental Instruction, who will hopefully be able to provide us some more information about that Gifted and Talented Program so we can take that back to the NCPACK members for the next meeting, which I think is October... It'll be probably before the next, before the October board meeting, not before the next board meeting. Is there anything that I missed from that?
Any questions from the board members? Thank you, board members.
So I had the pleasure this morning, actually, to review a portion of our Montgomery Middle School PTO meeting. It was a pleasure to see everyone's excited faces and eager about this new 23, 24 school year. There were many updates provided. Just a general update, similar to Mr. Dolan's statement about the seemingly, um, smooth start of the opening this school year. The PTO officers talked about sponsored activities and publication of a calendar and how that is available on the middle school's websites. The administration was present. I think that's Principal Romano, Principal Rivera, and Vice Principal Harley. And the two, right? Very well. They were present as well. And I know the UMS, the upper middle school campus administration emphasized the importance for those eighth-grade parents to volunteer to chaperone for the upcoming camp Jason trip, which is, we know is a strong tradition here in Montgomery Township Schools. Then, several teachers spoke. And one mentioned about the purpose of global classroom and it served as a hub containing all the information that's going to be accessed to support their learning. And then, um, there was explanation from the PTO officers that every Sunday night, they blast out a newsletter to all of the middle school parents, providing updates and a snapshot of upcoming events and activities. And then, um, as a representative of the board, we provided an update on communication, on new communication specialists. I think that's right.
Right.
Yes. And the Pay Central update, which I'll review in our officers' report tonight, as well as some updates on enhanced security measures at all of our schools.
Any questions or feedback about our Montgomery Middle School?
It's a great bunch of committed, awesome parents that we have here. Alright, and just a reminder to all the board members. I have board member, Board Attorney, and I have a foe that emailed to provide to you. Who would be the municipal alliance, I believe? They take the idea this over the summer and now they're resuming their meeting for this year. So I'll be sure to follow up that to you before I leave this evening. Alright. As it is September, none of our board committees have met. However, our officers' report, which is provided overview. After speaking with several of our board colleagues, thank you, board member Fiegler, for that update and feedback that you shared on this past Sunday. And attending and hearing feedback from the parents of our middle school PTO this morning, we thought it best to review the transition that the district has decided from Pay Forward to Pay Central. Now, Pay Forward and Pay Central are web-based payment systems that make lunch payments simple, secure, and affordable. Unlike Pay Forward, Pay Central will also be utilized for all expenditure exchanges between the school and the families, save for special circumstances such as the upcoming field trip. Costs are calculated. The school fines, lunch payments, and field trip admissions will be paid by families through Pay Central. So the district chose to transition from Pay Forward to Pay Central because Pay Central is described as user-friendly, a platform where parents can easily fund their child's accounts, pay fees, and manage all school related payments from one central location. It is the belief that this transition will simplify parents' interactions with the school district, providing a more seamless and hassle-free experience, as was highlighted in a community page that was sent district-wide by Superintendent McLaughlin. So if you'll take a look at your screen, the Pay Central user guide is very helpful as it provides step-by-step instructions on how to set up family accounts. The link to the user guide is found on our district website under the Parents Community tab. And it looks like what should be on the screen behind you. And parents may, I was told, out of habit, even log onto their Pay Forward account. And that's okay for now. In those cases, um, a screen will appear that will read in one second. It will describe, oh, I can't find it here on my screen, but it will describe that the transition has taken place and the login that the family uses for Pay Forward, it has automatically transferred and it can use the same login for Pay Central. So the Board of Education was also told that the monies remaining in any Pay Forward accounts were automatically transferred to the family's Pay Central account. And the automatic replenish feature is described by a few parents as easy and simple. And even the parents on the middle school PTO meetings today, so that was refreshing to hear. The parents are encouraged to call the child's school should they experience any technical issues or just having any trouble setting up any part of their Pay Central account. Thank you for your time. The officers' report. And now what concludes our board committee reports. Next, the Montgomery Township Board of Education acknowledges correspondence to the board. There were eight, as it is in the center part of page three. And now we reach the point of our second public comment. New business fund, the public to the board. And the instructions for the...
So can I ask a question?
Hold on a second. The instructions for the action agenda items only, public comment remain applicable. Yes, board members.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think I should pass this one mental, but we, we had the text that went out and there were problems with the computer systems in the school. I guess that got sorted out? Is there some...
Oh, the Genesis. Yeah.
Yeah, so some file review. What that was about?
Yeah, Genesis, our data information system went down at 3:30 Friday. Whatever day it was, it was at 3:30 and it was restored the next day. Fully restored. It was caused by power, like a low shortage of power. We have a system that backs up. So it actually happened at 4:30. The last backup was at 3:30. So at the most, information would have been lost for one hour. And at that day, the parents would have already had to have put in all of their demographic information and fill out the forms. So it should not have impacted any families. It may have impacted teachers who were setting up grade books. But it was one hour that no data would have been saved.
I think, yeah, because I remember asking last year, I think we had the ransomware question and somebody said we had this system there at work.
Absolutely, yes. But it wasn't ransomware, it was power.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaughlin. So Board Secretary Trent, our new business fund, the public to the board, is now.
New business. This is the right time?
New business, public comment is now.
Okay, hi, Jeff Grant, six months to drive, hi everybody. Sophia, good job. Entertaining, informative, positive. I really like to report that's excellent. Jeff Grant. And I wasn't going to let today pass, but I happened to see the picture of our school board president indecently exposing herself in public. And I had to reflect on, like, what I only start these remarks with is, the timer's not going well. These remarks with, is that line interception is real evil, although evil. By the way, I'm representing Jeff Grant. I'm not representing my church. I'm not representing my company. I'm not representing any other entity except Jeff Grant. I'm motioning to you, Barbara.
I think you're supposed to be addressing the board.
I'm motioning to you, and I'm addressing the board. So, I want to know my time, please. So I listened to Mr. Dolan's remarks about what an inspiration you are as a student body. Let's hope that that picture that's circulating doesn't inspire anybody. There's no parent in this school that would ever want their daughter to do what you did. It's really indecent and quite honestly, Madam President, you've reached the bottom of your, I guess, projection of your reality. I don't have much worse to get. Percentile rankings in the Board of Department of Education are 59 percentile, we're less than 10 points away from average. They're crushing our kids. You're going to South Africa, a country that is part of BRICS, which is focused on eliminating the US dollar as the national currency. You know what happened to our economy? If the US dollar is no longer the medium of exchange for buying oil, we will see currency manipulation like you haven't imagined before. South Africa had military, military exercises with China and Russia the month before you went. They're on the verge of making it illegal to report murders of white farmers. And you went to South Africa. Upon your return after six days, we've got a three-minute word salad. You mentioned the word collaboration six times. Not a single word about academics. And now we have this indecent exposure of you that's circulating around the internet. You've reached the bottom, Madam President. I'd ask that you please think about what you're doing to yourself and in the process, you're bringing down the school system. Bringing down our children. And I ask that you seriously consider doing the right thing. And finally, just let us go. Please let us go. Please move on. It's time. Alright? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Rappaport and I live at 9 Kingswood Drive in Bellneed. I hesitated to speak in the last meeting because I really needed to wrap my head around everything I heard. There was mention of banning books deemed objectionable by some individuals and an outfit worn by a grown woman on the... and an outfit worn by a grown woman on the board of ed on her personal time that has gotten everybody in a snit. Her personal time. I have daughters who are currently at Village. Since I had them later in life, I am considerably older than most of their classmates' parents, and probably one of the few Generation X. I'm a product of the New Jersey public schools in the seventies and eighties, and I can speak with complete authority what life in the classroom used to be like. First of all, I never saw a woman with a PhD. So if my sister sees a picture of you, Madam President, at a concert, all they're going to know is how hard you worked to get an advanced education because things were like that were not expected of women of a certain, women growing up. We didn't see that. So they'll see that you're educated. There is-- There was no test settings of the fifth grade when many students had already hit puberty, and by then, the context was extremely censored, leaving most sex education to happen between tiers. The classrooms were typically supported by one type of student deemed to be normal, neurotypical, straight, white, and often male. Boys Will Be Boys mentality allowing for snapping bra straps and other predatory behavior was deemed completely acceptable. There was no social, emotional support in the classroom. Students suspected of not being straight were openly ridiculed, not by just parents, but treated differently by the educators. Girls were being slut-shamed for dressing differently. When I was pregnant with my daughters, I promised myself I would not allow them to mature in this type of classroom environment, yet here we are, 2023, fighting to make sure that teachers in this district can continue their work of not only shaping our children academically, but also socially and emotionally. Sure, classrooms look differently than they did 40 years ago. That's because we know better now, and we can do better now.
Thirty-six.
I fully support the teachers here in Monty and can say unequivocally that some of the educators here that have taught my kids have been life-changing for them, not only making sure they meet their academic milestones, but meeting them where they are emotionally and allowing them to thrive, especially since my kids are the type of kids who color outside the lines. When there is talk about teaching kids anything other than strict academics, like supporting them emotionally or celebrating their diversity, there always seems to be someone against it, whether it's Pride Month with rainbow flags. In the meantime, I'm going to continue to support our teachers and just teach my kids to be kind.
Hi, Chilly Wallace. Thirty-- ooh! Oh, hi! 3724 Science Drive, I'm Montgomery alum, 2019. I'm a Montgomery from Remarkable Board Ed meeting, um, a few years ago. Look me up on Google, you'll only find good things. Search me, search me. Where'd he go? He can search me too. Yep, search me up right now. I beg. Okay, please. So, about the picture, surprise, it was my Instagram. Um, for those who don't know, if you go on my account, there is no affiliation with Montgomery. I will repeat, there is no affiliation with Montgomery on my Instagram account. Therefore, for any images circulating, circulating amongst Montgomery people who follow me, who I do not follow, if I could display on the screen, several Montgomery residents, I counted it, 75 people DM'd me saying, "Your mom was an inspiration." I get messages and-- I got text messages this past Friday at the football game saying, "Hey, I was graced by your mom's presence." On and on. Google Zelda Spence Wallace, Google Zelda Spence, you will find that she works with this company called I Am Rare, which is for uplifting and empowering women. I'm one of those women that she has empowered. I'm currently working towards going into medical school and then helping fellow children. And who is my inspiration? My own mother, who is being ostracized for wearing a top while also wearing a vest to a Beyoncé concert. And I, who knows Beyoncé? What does she wear? Hello? Have you been to a Beyoncé concert? She could have worn something worse, let me tell you that from where we were. And another thing about that concert, it's about black artistry, black expression, black queerness, anything black. She was expressing herself as a black woman. So for her to have to mute herself in her own space, on her own personal time, with me, with my niece, who thought, she's 10, thought, "My grandma rocks!" Look at what my grandma's wearing. A 10-year-old. But you, what, 50-plus? 60? Am I being generous? Um, are seeming to complain about something that children, teenagers, 20-year-olds, people who graduated 2019 before I did are like, "Your mom is amazing, and I wish I had that kind of confidence."
Thirty-six.
So from this Instagram post that's really perceived negatively, I don't follow anyone who's younger than me. So they looked for my account, they seeped that out, sent it to their parents, and it's circulating amongst Montgomery, this little bubble. Anyone else, anyone outside of Montgomery, Princeton, Hillsborough, have contacted me personally and said, "My mom rocks." I wish I could have that much confidence when I'm her age.
Uh, hi, I'm Eli Shuldean.
She's talking about me like in front of things.
So, uh-- Hang on a second. That we temporarily suspend this meeting at this time, so our director of security can address this matter? Motion is withdrawn.
This gentleman comes back up to the podium.
So, you may continue.
I'm Eli Shuldean, I live on five Mystic Drive, and I'm here to say that banning books is not okay. Hey, that marks. So, um, I think that banning books is not right. For one thing, people that I don't even know should not be telling me what I can and cannot read. That's up to the librarians, me, myself, and my parents. Yeah, that's basically it. But, um, there's, there is a really good book about why you should not ban books. It's called Ban This Book, probably somewhere in this library, or definitely somewhere in this school. Please do not ban it, despite the name of the title. And, yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Sorry, just wanted to make a comment from a board of education perspective. Um, I'm not sure what books are being referenced as banned, but the school has not banned any books, so I just wanted to do it as a reference. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dana Max Pomerance, and I live at 10 Aronin Court. I am here today to speak on a topic, uh, others have spoken on, but it's in regards to a photo that was originally shared to a public profile on Instagram. It is not private. The photos I'm referring to are of Dr. Zelda Spence Wallace, and came to our community's attention because they were displayed on her daughter's public, not private, profile on Instagram. Several people, including students who follow Zelda's daughter on Instagram, had initially messaged me regarding the photos. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the photos, I brought them for you to see. Here they are. Uh, here is Montgomery's school board president proudly wearing next to nothing except for two nipple pasties and a very tiny vest while attending a Beyoncé concert. I have absolutely no problem with what you, Dr. Zelda Spence Wallace, or anyone else does in your own private time. However, when a photo is shared to a public forum such as Instagram, which has over 2.35 billion monthly active users, you're inviting public commentary. When I think of women who are in positions of power, such as Michelle Obama and many others, they understand the importance of their role in the public eye, and they do not parade around half-naked as an act of strength and confidence. I'm speaking on this today because as a mother, myself, and as someone who also loves a good Beyoncé concert, I must question the judgment of someone who is in a position of power and making decisions on behalf of our children, who thinks it is appropriate to publicly dress like this. On a positive note, when something that struck me about this photo, Zelda, is your smiles. When you attend the Board of Ed meetings, you honestly look pretty unhappy within your role. As an agent of change and as a mentor to our children, I would love to see you bring your inner true light to your current role as the school board president while keeping in mind that our children and future leaders look up to you to set an example. Thank you.
They're in the film there, Jeffy. Chris Newman, wow. So now we have the new, uh, scandal du jour that they've manufactured because, I don't know, they don't have anything real to complain about. Um, the school board is doing such a great job, we could just have to continually harass Dr. Spence Wallace. And when it doesn't work for South Africa, then they, they stalk her daughter's Instagram page, because that's what they did. I mean, they were stalking, looking for something. I think that picture was up for 24 hours. And they found it. And kids who don't even know, I am sure that she's the board president now, or like texting the parents that they're scandalized. It's crap. They're lying, okay? It's not true. Secondly, I can't believe someone just told you that "you should smile more." That's, come on, it's absurd. So now we've had every racist, misogynistic statement that we could have, and it's gonna happen every meeting. They're trying to get some traction because they've got nothing conducive to say or to bring here. There's no reason you should not be able to dress how you want in your private time. I mean, every time I see you in public or one of these meetings, you are hands-down the most fashionably dressed person there. Maybe they're just jealous. I don't know, I'm a little jealous, but I can't dress like that. There's a lot of stuff going on here, it has nothing to do with the school board, it has to do with, I don't know, their insecurity, they're wanting to get rid of somebody so competent, they have nothing else to say. I mean, last week we had a year, last time I hear about how our students are being crushed, crushed, from Jeff Grant. Afterwards, students told me that seven seniors were accepted at Princeton last year. So I don't know, doesn't sound like that crushed me. So all I say is, thank you for putting up with this crap weekly. It's misogynistic, it's racist, it's frankly unbelievable, as we said in 2023 that we could put up with this. Um, but I'm sure it's gonna keep happening because drag queen went on for like six months, South Africa went on for like six months. So give them six months, and they'll find something else to pick on, which is ridiculous as well.
Good evening, everybody. Francine Pfeffer, five Mystic Drive in Skelman. I don't remember when it was, but a few weeks ago, months ago, Rich Speck came up here, a former board member, and said that we really need to focus on education because that's what we're here about. And I agree with him wholeheartedly. I am too. I am so tired of coming here, not that I don't love spending my Tuesday evenings once or twice a month with you. I would much rather be home watching Netflix, or, you know, reading a book, or doing something like that, but I really feel I have to be here to support the staff, to support the Board of Education, to say, "You're absolutely doing the right thing. Uh, our children need social, emotional learning, especially post-COVID, they need that as much as they need academics, if not more. Um, you will always learn academics, but resilience and your ability to triage which things are important, that is a much better indicator of success in life than your SAT scores." Because I know people who scored 1,600 on their SATs who went in college didn't know how to bake a potato or make pasta. And I think that the, those other things that we learn in school are far more important, and I understand many parents seem to think that they are the only ones who should be teaching their children. Those of you who say that live in a place of privilege, where your world is perfect. Not all children, even in this town, come from homes like that, have parents who are equipped to teach them certain things. So we need to keep on doing things. And I am tired of hearing about drag queens. I am tired of hearing about South, South Africa. And I am really tired also of hearing about how our board president dressed when she was on her own time. Please don't ever repeat that there are parents that every, no parent would want their child to be that way. I heard so many parents last month who agreed with the spirit of a Beyoncé concert, and it is all about female empowerment. So please, continue the course we have been on, continue to support our students, continue to teach them social, emotional learning, continue to place that at or above academics, because there is a lot of research that shows that your academics come from your parents' level of ability, and school is very limited in how much it teaches you academics. But we can do a lot to teach our children social, emotional learning, to teach them resilience, to teach them how to have friends. My son sitting back there was a little embarrassed because he didn't write down his words, so he forgot half of what he wanted to say. He has learned so much socially, emotionally, and he has learned so much in this school, and it has helped him grow. And so please continue that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, here, still, so I didn't come here, give them this, most of the fireworks, but, um, so as soon as everything we talk about is not necessary, uh, it's not important, it's something. So let's, uh, talk about what we usually get told here, uh, by people who peddle out reading that, uh, like you're talking, my back is turned and pointing at me. So remember, you're open to litigation, so please do it when I'm looking, you're not powered. So, that being said, okay, everything is about, we're a vocal minority, we're just a minority. So let me tell you historically about minorities, okay? There was this thing called slavery, and there was a vocal minority that didn't want it in place, okay? Moving forward into recent times, there are people that lived in New York that were gay and were being persecuted because they were gay. That was a vocal minority that was against them, okay? So there are people that would be, not in this audience, okay, including myself, that wouldn't be able to speak here, or wouldn't be able to attend public meetings, or wouldn't be able to get any actual medicine, okay? So this country has been founded on vocal minorities. But when you look at the vocal minorities, okay, the Muslim population is, uh, what? About 2 billion people worldwide? Catholics are roughly about the same? Those are vocal minorities, right? So if we're not able to speak at board meetings and say what we desire to say about protecting our children, then what is the, what is, what is the point? So the majority, so the majority of people wanted slavery, the majority of people didn't want any homosexualism. So is that what we should be with? So the vocal minority is very important, okay? I came here to talk about my kids again. We still don't know what books are in there, so I guess I'll have to Oprah to find out what books are in actually in their classroom. And the last thing I want to hear is, "Oh, we can't do that." Well, then, there's a problem. Because if you can't do it, I volunteer my time, and I will come do it. And I will be with whoever you want. I'll pay a cop to come sit with me, and we can go and inventory what is actually on there, okay? Because not having the teachers or the school administration know what is in the school's kids' library--
Thirty-six.
--or in their classroom is unacceptable. That is not a lot to ask or to know what my child is reading, what my teacher is reading to my child. Any questions? Any questions?
Any further new business to the board public comment?
Once again, the 100th raise, 85, 10th drive. So, I just want to acknowledge what previous leaders, the people who came up here regarding academics. I have three kids in the school district system, I deeply care about their academics and well-being, and I very much appreciate what everybody is doing there. And I also be with a young gentleman who said that books that the kids read, the parents have something to say. So I mentioned before, I have three kids, right? The school year just started, and we received an email about the health and physical education review that we could be exempted from based on religious grounds. So I did email the principal, and I was asked to identify the specific units and lessons that I objected on, which I did. But I made it clear, right, that the lessons that I was identifying was only raised on when it was published, right? I want to make this clear, what my objections were on religious ground, and I wanted to let her know that I wanted to be respected of that, right? In the response, she told me, yes, your exemption is going to be honored, however, keep in mind that in English and social studies, and I'm talking about a third-grade student, right? He will be taught subjects that you will have an objection based on your conscious and religious beliefs, right? And that is not exempt. I have asked, I think this is the third time that I have spoken in this forum, and I understand that in Montgomery, we believe in diversity and inclusion. And what somebody was saying about the minority, if my religious beliefs are minority, don't it? It doesn't deserve respect? All that I'm, I don't care what every person thinks about what the morals should be, all that I'm asking is, based on mine and my family's religious view, allow us to be exempted. Put a different book about diversity, I'm not saying that my kids shouldn't learn about difference, talk them about disability. I just don't want a terrible lady to be taught about sexual content, I just don't. So I'm asking you, Madam President, please put a vote, put it in the agenda to allow for that exemption. You guys talk about diversity and inclusion, religious ground is one of them. Please allow us to have that. Thank you.
New business public comment, portion of our public meeting is now closed. Thank you, everyone. To the President in the boardroom, would you please answer any questions that were voted that you're able to at this time? I know we're calling here, you have to, they're all comments, they're all comments. Okay, great, action agenda items. So at this time, I move that we vote to approve our action agenda items this evening. It will be 1.1 to 4.5. So move.
Sir.
Mr. Carlsson.
Yes. Ms. Vila.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Vina.
Yes.
Ms. Leipiger again.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Ms. Frankl-Herman.
Yes.
Dr. Spence Wallace.
Yes.
Thank you, action items carried.
Thank you, Board of Assembly, Harry Trump, and the business. David Colombo, thank you to everyone for your participation and attendance on Tuesday, September 12, 2023, all the public board meeting. In case we get any objections, I move that we adjourn our meeting at this time.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you, everyone, and good night.